Mr. Stein.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Rock.
Here. Stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the June 26, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second and any discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, special reports.
There are.
There are none, okay. We move on to audience comments. This is the portion of the meeting where any member of the audience can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak?
Good evening, Anne.
Anne.
Hi. Sorry I wasn't here last week, but I had something I was planning myself, so I had no time to come. But the reason why I'm here tonight is I want to, or why I'm speaking tonight is I want to address the community day that we had, and I would have spoken about it at the last meeting if I had been here. I've attended many community day events, and I really feel that the township, now I don't know who makes the decision about, you know, how it should be laid out for the vendors and everything, but I really think they, you missed, if you're part of that decision, you missed a great opportunity to premiere the new park, okay? Because you had a squash down there on the road, and it was like a big funnel, or a big chute, may I say? And it, you know, it, thank God it wasn't a steamy hot day, because we would have baked on that asphalt down there. We really would have. So I don't think that good judgment or planning was given to how you set up the vendors, but knowing me, you know, I just, you just can't take my opinion on that now, because I do do surveys, as you know. So I did walk around, and I asked a lot of the other vendors how they felt, and they did not like it either. Now, if no one else has come forth to tell you that, then perhaps they just don't want to get you mad at them or something, okay? But I have nothing to lose to tell you how I feel, so I'm just saying that I had a lot of people tell me their dissatisfaction with the setup. I think you need to take into consideration, too, that in the years past, you had a lot of people who owned like fitness centers, who participated, were chiropractors, and I kept walking up and down, and they were not getting much business. And I think it's because, now, with all due respect to anybody who is overweight or whatever, you know, if you're overweight and you want to talk to a fitness person, I mean, you don't want to do that out in front of everybody, okay? If we had been meandered up into the park, people can disguise their, walk over to a fitness center or just to say hi, and maybe not have their neighbors see them talking to those people or whatever, but we had a booth next to ours, the fitness centers that's up at the crossroads, he had three people come over to his booth and sign up, okay? And he, he was really disappointed, because he wasn't having any customers at all come over. Plus, I think that the way that it, and I would hope that you all were there, so you could see how the setup was, unless you were on vacation. But with it being like a chute going down the road, it's like getting clogged up, you know? Because people are trying to go through, and then they maybe wouldn't stop at a booth, because, oh, what's, you know, I'll just keep on going, because it just was getting too clogged. Plus, I think, you know, I don't know what anybody was thinking when they set it up that way. Where were people supposed to eat? You know? There was, I saw one booth that had like little baby chairs for people to sit on. I mean, it was ridiculous. Plus, when it did rain, and it rained three times on us that day, you had pavilions up on top of that hill that people could have gone under. We were letting people come in under our tent to get out from under the rain. So it just wasn't good thinking. I think we could have done better than that, and I think that, you know, I would hope that for the years to come, I don't know what reason was given for not wanting it to be up into the park. I don't live that far from the park, but that was my first time up in the park, okay? Because I'm too busy of a person, I can't do my walking up in the park, so I have to do it in my activities that I participate in. So I, I'm just saying, I think that better thinking has to go into it for next year. And I just think it was a poor thought, especially to those businesses who all these years have really participated in the community day, and they, they didn't get much business, and you need to consider that. You had other people there that were new, and maybe they got business, but I don't know if that's what you want. But so you have to think, what are you going for here? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanner. Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I can't stay. I have something to do.
You know, Paul, might not be bad to maybe do an exit poll, so to speak, and see what people thought, managers thought.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I mean, I think she had some valid points. I talked to her earlier this week, and I ran into her, I think, up at the courthouse or something, but, you know, there wasn't a place to sit and eat.
Well, and again, it's the first year at the new park. The, the committee that organizes that is meeting as a follow-up to it. I think one of the things that she suggested is probably a good idea is that we ought to reach out to those vendors and ask them what we can do to improve their situation, so. I, I do think one of the things that is intended to happen, and I think it will improve the thing, is to incorporate the, the lawn area into community day.
Please, Steve, go first.
Hello.
Hello.
Microphone's working.
Oh, okay, well, you need to move.
Okay, my name is Anne Marie Wifker. We live in 139 East Edgewood in a house we bought in 1968. And I have a problem that begins, it kind of begins with everybody, because we all know the problem that we have had with, with deer in many shapes or forms. Now I think they're ready to move in with me. My next-door neighbor feeds them every night. They're like his cows. I mean, he, he stands with corn and all kinds of stuff, and he feeds them. And the result of all this eating results in them desperately needing a bathroom, so they use his backyard, and it wafts over to our area. First, we stayed inside because of the Canadian smoke, and then that cleared up, so we, my son doesn't live with me, but he's extremely helpful and comes over in, in the evening after his father died, has been very helpful. I get extra points for being old. So, anyway, this has gotten to be a real problem, because we sit outside and depending on how the wind turns, we get this waft of deer toilets right in our faces, and I don't think that's fair. I'm an animal lover, I never invite any of them for dinner, but I pity the animals because we're taking the habitats away from them. So my question is, couldn't anything be done to, to prevent this? I think of the, it isn't just the deer. Deer brings ticks. I have a dog who gets, gets medication every month, but I could get, I can get ticks. I know somebody who had, what's the disease again?
Could I?
Lyme disease.
Start to interrupt. I had to call the police on the Fourth of July, because we couldn't sit outside because the smell was so oppressive. We went inside, the door was open, we had to shut the door and turn on the air conditioning. We called the police, and he told us to go to section 274-5 of the Code of Ordinances. There's a copy of the police report right here.
What he, I think what he's pointing you to is, the council has the ability, and there's a process behind this.
Okay.
To declare something to be a nuisance. There is not in within our Code of Ordinance right now.
Okay.
A prohibition against feeding animals, but there, the council has the ability, in a very broad way, to declare, to declare something a nuisance, the township.
But it's beyond a nuisance, it's also a health hazard.
Yeah, well, no, that's, but that's what it, for the, for the purposes of address of your concern.
Okay.
That's how you can do it.
Okay.
You can then prohibit it then.
So could I, could I present this police report?
I have a copy of that already. I need it, if you want to.
Oh, sure.
Well, Paul, can we send somebody out there to see what that condition is? Because, you know.
Yeah, you.
I would think that, that we could at least send a letter, say they have to clean up their yard and whatever. That's not right.
No, I don't, I would agree with you that it is not right. I just don't know that it's a violation of our ordinance to feed animals in one's backyard.
It's every day. We had 17 ducks in our backyard in the spring, and there's been turkey back there, I don't know what other kind of rooings and whatnot. He's piling corn in the backyard every night, and they, he feeds them by hand. And my sister was here, and she called, and there was nothing that anybody could do. I called in the past, and there was nothing anybody could do.
And I think regarding ordinances, I think it's time to maybe make an ordinance.
Well, this is.
Because the deer are there, they know where to go.
Well, it may well be that feeding them is a violation of the ordinance, but when it gets to the point where, you know, deer excrement is piling up in the backyard to the point where the neighbors can't sit outside, there has to be, that has to fall under the nuisance provision.
I would welcome anybody to come and look. I can't guarantee you that the wind is right at the time when they come, but if.
Well, we've had the similar conditions that we've dealt with relative to people keeping horses, and the problem of.
Yes.
Except there's.
And we've worked on it before, so after.
It rains, and then the heat comes, it gets really, really bad. And then after it dries out, it can become bearable for a while, and then repeat the process, but it's never been this bad.
And my, my son called him, and he hung up on him.
Yeah, this is years ago.
So, yeah, well, a couple of years ago, but still, so I don't, I don't know how long I will be staying in the house, but I certainly would like to enjoy a summer evening, you know, without sitting in the deer toilet.
Yeah.
So thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
And thank you for coming, and I realize the chore that that made.
Pardon?
We recognize the chore that coming here tonight was for you.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I was nervous.
There was no reason to be nervous about.
No, I know, but.
We're your neighbors too, so.
What we will do is Seth and I, we'll take a look at this, and we'll give you some direction as to what we can and can't do.
Sure.
Okay. So do you contact my number that's on there? How does this work?
I, I can contact whoever you want. If you want to leave your contact information, I can let you know.
My phone number should be on that police report there, so that's fine.
My phone number too.
Okay. I don't live there, I just.
This, this is your name and number here?
Yeah.
Okay.
He dispelled it within the.
That's okay, but. As long as the number's.
Close enough, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Is she all right with the stairs, or?
She's been using the elevator.
She did use the elevator? Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll move on to unfinished business, of which there is none, so we'll move into new business. First item, special permit for Always Be Smiling for a 5K walk-run and fun event on the Montour Trail.
So Always Be Smiling is requesting a special permit for a 5K walk-run event along the Montour and Arrowhead Trail for Sunday, July 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This is the third annual walk-run, and it serves as a fundraiser for the, for the organization. The prior two similar events were held solely on the Montour Trail and occurred without a problem. When they were setting up this event, the organizers were, were informed that the Greer Tunnel is closed for repairs. And so to be able to do a 5K run will mean running out to the Greer Tunnel and then coming back and going across part of Arrowhead Trail. So what's before council is really two requests. One is approval of the special event, which I'm recommending, but the second is to grant a departure from the, the Arrowhead Trail request policy. The policy requires that, that there be not more than one event over any four-week period, and the reason for that is that these kind of events disrupt trail usage. There's a cost to using the, to using the trail for this kind of event, in this case it's $70. Trail requests must be submitted two months prior to the request. They weren't able to do that, because they didn't realize there was a problem. A certificate of insurance is required, naming the township as an additional insured, and a security deposit in the, in the amount of $250 is required. So at least two of those, those criteria can't be met, but it's going to be my suggestion that if you choose to allow them to be on the Arrowhead Trail, that they meet the remaining requirements, and that the 5K walk-run be done such that the first leg is going out onto Arrowhead Trail and returning back, because one of the things that's going to have to happen is the parking lot that's down there, the sanitary authority's got to be closed, because you can't have runners there with cars backing into them. So my thought is if they, if they did the first leg out to here and back by 10 o'clock, the, the trail could be opened back up again and without any disruption to, to the, to the event. And in the future, I want to explain to them what the trail use policy is, so they, they comply with this going forward, so. So there's really two things in front of council. One, you want to grant them a special permit, and two, do you want them allowed to use the Arrowhead Trail?
I want to make a motion that we approve the special permit to hold the 5K walk-run and fun event on Sunday, July 23rd, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
Motion to second and any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer.
And then I'll make the motion that we grant a departure from the Arrowhead Trail request policy, and that they be granted permission to use that small portion of the trail, subject to the three things spelled out in the manager's report, which is that they comply with the remaining requirements of the Arrowhead Trail request policy, that they in the future fully comply with the request procedures and policies, and that the 5K walk slash run be routed, so that the township parking lot near the sanitary authority plant only be closed from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m.
Second that as well.
Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, resolution authorizing the township manager to sign and submit traffic signal maintenance agreement and application of traffic signal approvals to Pendott.
Yes, throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, municipalities are required to maintain traffic signals located in their community. In the past, this was accomplished by having municipalities enter into a separate agreement for each traffic signal. Pendott has changed that, and with this replacement of the traffic signal at East McMurray and Thompsonville Road, they're using this as an opportunity to, for us to enter into a blanket agreement that covers all traffic signals. It's my recommendation that council approve Resolution 70123, authorizing the township manager to sign and submit a traffic signal maintenance agreement and an application for a traffic signal improvement to Pendott.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 070123, authorizing the township manager to sign and submit a traffic signal maintenance agreement and an application of traffic signal approvals to Pendott.
Second. Motion in the second, any discussion?
Does this seem to be completely non-negotiable?
That would be correct.
It's, it'd be said paperwork for them, and.
Oh, it makes sense. From our standpoint, it makes sense, too. We're not holding on to all these permits.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Winter Circle consolidation, as shown on drawings prepared by Gateway Engineers, dated March 22nd, 2023, for Almeyer LLC.
Yes, this is the current configuration of property owned by the Winter Circle LLC. They've submitted a, a subdivision to consolidate the five parcels into two parcels. These are the parcels that are located in both Peter Township and North Strabane, and this is where the apartment complex will eventually be constructed. What they're doing is combining the parcels together in such a way that all the land owned in Peter's Township is one parcel, and all the land owned in North Strabane is another parcel. I just want to be clear about something. I noticed that Mrs. Merrill had sent us an email today, expressing concern about the development. What council should, I remind you of, is that when this became used by right, approval no longer comes back to council, and that approval for this apartment complex has been granted by the planning commission at this point. This is simply a subdivision of land, and really doesn't have anything to do with how that property is going to be developed.
I understand, but I do think that you made some valid points in here, you know, especially relating to us obtaining information about the renter, you know, we need that landlord tenant statute, or ordinance to come in, so that we don't miss any earned income tax and all that kind of stuff, and we know who's living here.
Yes, I think what this, what changes here is you now have substantial number of renters, and we need to know who's renting.
Right, and I just think overall, most communities are doing that, because, you know, you want to ensure that those units are, you know, have working smoke detectors and all, you know, all the bells and whistles, which is just a safety thing.
Yes.
It's a lot easier to do that than have, you know, fire over there, have to bring out that big truck and, you know, all that kind of stuff. Now, I think the other point is that I just would want to note is, I tend to agree with her about, and I don't remember the plan, but I think that access to Waterdam Road is just ludicrous, especially where it's going to be, but I, I think they should have to go out in the back on to Galley.
Well, they could be able to do both, and in the case of Waterdam, we don't control that, Pendott does, and they have to get an HOP, which I, do they have that yet?
Not yet, but they're very close to that.
Well, I mean, I just think it's, well, I guess Pendott will have to deal with it, but.
Yeah.
And I think if somebody coming out of there, trying to make a left there, that's just to me insane.
In their most recent set of HOP drawings, there is a little bit of available stripe space along Waterdam for a short turning lane. It might not be required, but it would be helpful.
But then interconnection with Ace, is that, would we pass the point of pulling that off?
It, it can't happen with the actual driveway of Ace. There's just too much separation there, too much, too many issues. We are looking at a pedestrian connection up to the Grande Plaza though.
Could you walk me around the perimeter? I mean, I understand where the school is here, Waterdam, and Ace, I don't know whether that stops at that little corner there?
So the top right of the right of the red portion, directly above that, would be the Grande Plaza. As you move further left, this would be Ace Hardware back here. This is the boundary of North Strabane, Galley Road. The driveway for the golf course is about right here, and then obviously you go further down into North Strabane here. Again, Primrose, and then the intersection of Waterdam and Galley is just off-screen there.
Well, you started from the hardware store. What, what is this line that's running?
Right here?
No. Well.
This one? The, this, this V?
Yeah.
I don't know where you are.
Who owns that parcel?
Ace Hardware.
Do we know who owns it?
It's all part of Ace Hardware property.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
The back area, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, they have a, a large piece of property.
That's a lot of space back there.
They do.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, and they're driving, but their driveway stops off-screen, you couldn't see it if it even.
I can't see your pointer either, but that's what you were trying to.
I mean, it's up by the north there, like the driveway's up here off 19.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's where that piece.
Where's the proposed exit on Waterdam?
Approximately there.
Right in the middle there.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Peter, we, for recording purposes, the Winter Circle consolidation, shown in drawings prepared by Gateway Engineers, dated March 22nd, 2023, for Almeyer LLC, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning commission.
Second. Motion in the second, any further discussion?
Yep, one more question. The bridge that we repaired, or Colbert, whatever, that's just to the south of Lindenwood, where is that on? It's got to be before the tip of this.
Is that by that?
It's right, I think it's right. The parcel starts, Paul. It's right.
It would have to be.
Yeah, that's where that. Probably when you get down below Primrose.
It's, it's right before.
Yeah, because that's where it goes.
If this is the driveway to the golf course, it's right before that.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem right. Okay, it's not relative to anything but part of the decision-making.
All right, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Snyder Consolidation Plan, as shown on drawings prepared by J.R. Gales and Associates, dated February 27th, 2023, for John, J. John James LLC.
So this is a subdivision of two lots owned by J. Joe Johnson, J. John James LLC, to be combined into a single parcel. The parcels are located at the intersection of East McMurray and Thompsonville Road. This is the site of the Cohen Market. The, the intent is with this is to eventually build a new convenience store and pump set that location. It's my recommendation that council approve for recording purposes Snyder Consolidation Plan.
I'll move that we approve for recording purposes the Snyder Consolidation Plan, as shown on drawings prepared by J.R. Gales and Associates, Inc., dated February 27th, 2023, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning commission.
Motion in the second, any further discussion?
Yep. All right, this parcel was part of an approved development a number of years ago. I don't know that we ever determined if that's expired.
It has expired.
It's been more than five years, for sure.
It's been, it was like 2010?
Yeah.
There's no pending litigation as a result of it, and we had a lot of comments from residents at the time that that was done.
Well, and again, what you're looking at is a plan that will eventually go to the planning commission for approval, but the one thing that I told Seth, given the visibility of this and the interest of that neighborhood, we'll certainly bring it back to council for the purposes of providing a review and recommendation to the planning commission before they approve it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Pasqualeini-Swet subdivision, as shown on drawings prepared by J.R. Gales and Associates, dated May 24th, 2023, for Pasqualeini and Swet.
So this proposed subdivision would adjust the share of lot mine between spots 211 and 313 of the Anthony Farms plan of lots. Mr. and Mrs. Swet are constructing the new home. In addition to the house shown on the building permit, a large coverage structure was built, and as a result, that structure, of that structure, the, the lot coverage maximum of 15% has been exceeded. To address the issue, this subdivision transfers additional property onto that, to that lot. This, this is, was reviewed by the planning commission, and, and approval was recommended. In addition to the planning commission's recommendation, it's Seth and my recommendation that the rear yard setback on the southeast corner of Pascinelli's property be adjusted to reflect the 40-foot requirement where it abuts the property. So in that, that setback line that runs straight across there, it needs to be bumped off to, to reflect the addition of land to the other side. The other thing is, I think there ought to be a note placed on the subdivision indicating that Lot 313R is currently at the maximum lot coverage, and therefore no additional structures can be built on that lot, so that there's some recorded record of that.
Makes sense.
Yeah, makes sense.
I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes the Fescott, Quinelli, Swet subdivision, as shown on drawings prepared by J.R. Gales and Associates, Inc., dated May 24th, 2023, for Pascinelli and Swet, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning commission, and the condition recommended, conditions recommended by the township manager.
Second.
Motion in second. Paul, do we know, how did they get a permit to build a structure which exceeded the maximum lot coverage? Was that a mathematical computation error on our part, or what?
No, it was built in addition to, so the house permit was issued, the covered porch was. The covered porch was being constructed. We discovered the covered porch being constructed. They revised their construction drawings, resubmitted them to us. We determined they were exceeding lot coverage. Then we said, well, we're not going to issue an occupancy until this issue is addressed.
Yeah, so the original permit wasn't compliant. It's they weren't.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, change order number one to the contract with ABS Building Systems Integrators LLC for the renovation of the Public Works Garage.
So at the end of June, ABS Building Systems began work on the Public Works Building renovation project. One of the things that when they were doing the demolition, they brought to our attention is that the ceiling in in this area was undulating, and when they removed that ceiling, what was discovered is that this trusses had brought it on that on that one end of the structure, and that was what was causing the instability. They have stabilized that, and what they're what they're asking is, in terms of a proposed change order, to put a new ceiling in there at a cost of $7,095. This represents a change of 1.9% from the original contract, and the change, even with the change, was well within the budget of $50,000. So it's my recommendation that council approve change order number one to the contract with ABS System Integrators for the renovation of the Public Works Garage in the amount of $7,095.15.
I'll make the motion that we approve that change order.
You're being busy.
Well.
Go ahead.
The change order number one in the contract with ABS Building Systems Integrators LLC for renovation of Public Works Garage in the amount of $7,095.15.
Second. Motion seconded, any discussion?
Please. You mentioned that they want to repair or are willing to repair the ceiling. Have you excluded how they're going to repair the framing?
Oh, they're. Could you speak to that? So the contractor, when they discovered this, first looked at the durability of the wood and the rest of the trusses. They determined that it was in pretty good shape, so they ran out and grabbed a couple four-by-sixes and shored up the trusses on both sides of the washroom. You can't see the other side if you're looking at the picture. It's over by the entryway and kind of tightened up that entire ceiling structure. So we should be seeing a change order for that work to make sure that the trusses.
That's the point, that this is not addressing that cost. This is just for the ceiling.
That's correct.
I think we ought to wait till we see the whole thing, but whatever.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Five-two, Mr. Lauer. Next item, payroll and bills, Dr. Porosco.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed payrolls and bills. They're all in good standing order. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Any correspondence, Mr. Lauer?
Nope.
Anybody want to discuss any of theirs? Board, commissioner, authority minutes? Anything under miscellaneous, Mr. Lauer?
Just wanted to bring to your attention, the last weekend was touch a truck. Nice day, overwhelming attendance, and, you know, it's the kind of thing I think the parking record department does so well, so.
This was in Peterswood or up at?
Yes, this is in Peterswood. The other thing is Columbia Gas has approached us. They need to do work on a valve that's located, this is Thompsonville Road, East McMurray Road, the parking lot corner. They need to do work on a valve that's located in that area. We don't get a choice about whether they do that or not. They want us to enter into an agreement with them because just as we use their property, for them to be able to get to that valve, they're going to come across our property. So that parking lot's going to be closed for, do you remember, Mark?
About like three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah.
I'm going to again say that I think we should look into closing that permanently because quite honestly, with the additional space we have at Pelopets now and the traffic nightmare that that creates of people cutting out of there and cutting into there, I really don't see how it'd benefit them. We can put, what, 15 cars in there maybe max?
Yeah, it's probably that.
Like I've always said, it's no different than somebody turning left from West McMurray into the CVS. It just backs people up there.
Oh, no, that I agree with you. I would agree with that.
I mean, I really think we ought to look into closing that permanently, maybe just making a pedestrian access that you can connect down to the sidewalk there.
Well, how are we going to do that, though? Because who else does they need to get in there? Like, isn't there a gas facility there?
Oh, yeah, but.
So how would they get in?
Well, but we can have a gate or something that allows them in. But if you're actually going to close it, the best time to do that is when the gas company makes us close it down, just don't open it back up again.
I really think we ought to seriously consider that.
Why?
It's a bad traffic situation.
Have there been any accidents?
They've logged up the traffic there horrendously.
Yes, that's the problem. It clogs the traffic up terribly. What happens, it's people coming off of East McMurray Road, going to make a left-hand turn in there. It backs traffic up onto to East McMurray Road. People block it all the time despite the fact there's a sign on the road that says do not block.
Yeah, they make a little left turn there. Don't get rid of the parking lot that people use.
We make a no-left turn on West McMurray in the CVS, but we do it every day.
Yeah, you'll never stop a left-hand turn.
Yeah, right. What about like, didn't we lose spaces down the road because of the roundabout work?
We will for the next few months.
Maybe we should, if we're going to do that, we should, yeah, but I'm just saying, maybe we should, if we're going to, if we're going to close this, we should wait till after that construction gets done because then you're going to lose 15 spaces, and where are those people going to park? They're going to go to Outfits?
Extended parking lot there or Always Be Smiling? Extended parking lot.
There's one on the other side.
The fact that matters on the trail, there is limitless parking because one of the ways you access the trail is Peterswood Park.
Rolling Hills Park.
Rolling Hills Park. There, I think people go to where they think it's convenient for themselves personally. That's what that is.
When this was put in, it was needed because we didn't have the number of spaces we have now.
Yes.
You know, and like I said, to me, it's just, there's not been one time during the day I've gone down through there that the traffic is not jammed up because of somebody trying to make that turn across there.
I agree with with Mr. Eric Hury on not to do it right now with that parking, you know, removal.
You're going to lose it right now because they're going to dig up to the gas valve.
They said like late August is when they were planning this project.
I'm not in favor of seeing it closed at all, but that's.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't know enough about that, whether that jams up and how bad it is. I've got that.
I mean, the bigger problem now is the amount of traffic on Thomas Road because everyone's using Bunker Hill as the detour.
Have we ever thought, I mean, about a traffic light at this intersection here?
We actually have.
Oh, we attempted that, yeah.
And I didn't meet Pendott's standards.
When was that looked at?
Relatively recently. When we did the intersection improvements, that widening, that the first look was to coordinate a traffic signal here with the other side, and what was determined after they studied it was it would actually hurt the movements as opposed to help the movements, and that's why we ended up doing so.
But if that was five years ago, the amount of development that's gone on in Venetia over the last five years, and I don't know, I'm not a traffic engineer expert, but is that something that needs to be revisited?
Well, we could do that. We could ask Mr. Budry to look at it again.
I thought they did look at future growth in those, when they review plans like that.
They do. Right now, it's kind of a bad time.
I doubt they're going to let you put a light within, what, as far as that from the. Yeah, I was going to say 300 feet.
I doubt they'd actually give approval for that to be used as a parking area.
Then we definitely get rid of it.
Oh, wait a minute. Highway occupancy permit to get in and out of there or not?
It would be a parking.
It would resolve any existing driveway for the gas company.
Yeah, but doesn't that be a change of use, though, I would think?
I don't know.
We can revisit the issue later. I just think that's an accident waiting to happen, and there's plenty of other places people can park. We don't need to decide that tonight. Anything else under miscellaneous, Mr. Lauer?
Nope.
Anything anybody wants to see on the next agenda? Okay, we have an executive session?
Yes, we do.
We are adjourned.